I would love to call the meeting to order. Shall we rise, salute the flag from where we are, if you will? I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America. Stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all.
Roll call of the members of the Health and Human Services Subcommittee. Counselor Keith is absent. Counselor McKenna is absent. Counselor Morabito?
Here.
Here, Counselor Serino.
Here.
Here, Counselor Visconti.
Here.
Here, Council President Zambudo is absent, and Chairman Rotundo.
Present.
Here, Quorum is present.
Mister Chairman?
Yes, Counselor Serino.
If I might, may I ask that we take up the second item on the agenda first?
I understand your constraints.
Thank you.
So, the second item on tonight's agenda is Council Order twenty-one dash two-one-zero, motion presented by Counselor Rotundo, that the City of Revere investigate the feasibility of cottage food operations as permitted in other communities in Massachusetts and twenty-eight states around there.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'd like to first recognize Dimple Rana. And I think she's going to be a pivot, a pivotal person in this particular process. I know Mike Wells will be as well. Let me first add by saying that currently, as you pointed out earlier, this is something that is controlled by the state. What we need to put forward right now is an application process. And basically, ensure that we can have access or provide access online to training for people within our community, so that we can help them, you know, with their residential cottage kitchen. We could make an ordinance but at, and follow Boston's. But I'd like to get Ms. Rana's input first, to be quite honest with you folks.
Thank you, Counselor Rotundo. I think for the record, Dimple Rana, Director of Healthy Community Initiatives, City of Revere. I'm in support of moving forward with this feasibility study for residential kitchens and also for commercial kitchens, which are two separate pieces of this overall move towards Revere's food economy. So I do want to share that the city does need to pass an ordinance or a policy to allow for residential kitchens to operate in the city that also comply with the state CMR. So the state has their own CMR for cottage laws for residential kitchens, but each municipality has to adopt this for their, for their city. So we would have to do that. And it would take a little bit of time. I think we should definitely involve Mike Wells as our, as you mentioned, as the Director of ISD. I would also probably involve a couple of other people because inspections would be needed for residential kitchens, so there would be a permitting process where residents would have to have their trainings and certifications. But they would also need to have their residential kitchens inspected before they can move forward in producing any sort of food under the cottage law. And so, the feasibility study that is being proposed would help move this forward to see what other cities and towns are doing in terms of inspections. What are they looking at? We also, one of the other pieces that we should definitely also include is the department who would inspect, but also what are the regulations that they are inspecting on, and so that we have a guide. And a way that inspectional services can, you know, also periodically make some checks, making sure that the kitchens are staying in compliance, et cetera, especially as, you know, these goods would be sold to the public. And then the second part around commercial kitchens. This is also another great endeavor that we should definitely move forward. And we don't quite have the space that Commonwealth Kitchen has. But, you know, maybe that's something that we can work on with future developments. And to see, you know, something like that, at least at that size and capacity here in the city. I do want to mention that we do have something that we're working on within my department and the mayor's office on a, on a smaller scale, along with some of our community partners, that I don't have. I'm going to leave it to the mayor to share the information. I'm not going to release any of that, but we are working on a shared commercial kitchen space that residents can use to develop some, some of their products that don't fall under cottage laws, and they would need a larger space. Also with kitchenware that's on a commercial grade and a higher capacity to produce their items that they're making. So just in terms of moving both of these pieces forward, we should definitely look into the feasibility and involve the other parties in, in, in making this happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rana. I truly appreciate it. One of the things I want to point out is currently, the residential kitchen application can be obtained through the Bureau of Environmental Health and Food Protection Program out of Jamaica Plain. They have an online application process through the DPH, in which you can actually file for it. The question is, is that when that happens, we in the City of Revere really don't know who is doing what. And they could be selling products that might not be up to the standard that is required. There is no oversight, which I think is something that is necessary. And as Ms. Rana had spoken about before, there, there are certain products that are limited. Cookies, jellies, things of that nature. And the requirements for sanitation, as well as other certifications that are required underneath the Commonwealth's law. I, I guess the first question is, does anybody have a problem setting up or putting through a process for a application within the City of Revere in which we either emulate Boston's process and codify it as an ordinance? Or is the committee more apt towards going towards just a strict application process where it's online? It hooks into the state site, and it also requires them to get a city license. And obviously, go through the processes of certification and the oversight within the various departments. I can't see who's raising their hand up, so I apologize. Stephen, I believe you're first. Miss?
Thank you, Mister Chairman. So my question is, I did a little research, and Ms. Rana is correct, that the city council would have to adopt a a law in order for us to move forward with this. So, my question is, do you think, Mister Chairman, we should move forward and have the mayor's administration look into it? And then come back with any law? He wants the city council to pass so we can move forward? Or we could put a motion on the table? And I'm not sure what the exact general law is that we have to adopt.
It's one of, I believe it's, it's various regulations, one oh five CMR five point nine zero, one oh five CMR five point five two zero, one oh five CMR five hundred, twenty, and ninety, et cetera. There's several various applications of the law that have to be required. And I, I think sending it to the mayor i- is vitally important because, you know, the stakeholders, the people that are going to deal with this from, you know, day to day, people from Healthy Initiative. Dimple runs so many programs that will intertwine into this particular pro, this particular process, that it's vitally important that we get her input, and it's vitally important that we get Mike Wells' input, because he's the one that's going to be overseeing this. So I totally agree with you, Counselor Morabito.
So I think the next step is to, like, keep this in committee, and we should move ahead and file them, put a motion forward to be discussed at the city council chambers. Actually, the council president will probably send it back to your committee, and then we can vote on it and vote it out as the committee deems fit.
Well, Ms. Rana, excuse me, Stephen, if I may. Would it seem better to obtain the process in Boston and emulate it here, or do you think that's too cumbersome? Or do you think it would be better to formulate our own system, which is what I'm more tuned to?
Yeah, we would need to formulate our own system, just because of capacity issues, and we do definitely need to set a standard around inspections. So that our inspectors know what they're, they're supposed to be looking for, how to enforce it, things of that nature. So an application for residents is one thing, but on the city end, we definitely want to make sure that we're setting forward a system that we know can be regulated and followed.
Can I also make a point for those, Mister Chairman, for those of you who, who are watching, that these food cottage food laws, they are, they're foods that can be stored at room temperature, like any food that requires temperature control are not permitted under the law, under the current law. So just to put some minds at ease, I didn't want to state that.
That's correct, Stephen. I'm, I'm sorry for the informality. I apologize, Counselor Morabito. I just keep on saying that, and please don't take it as any disrespect. Personally, I think we also need to kind of work with Ruben Cantor to possibly set up an application process online. And there are particular links to various, you know, certificate programs for like Safe Serve, Sandy Clean, all which are required underneath the Massachusetts law, as well as other various certificates and so forth. So I think i- if we do go full with this, like you said, Counselor Morabito and Director Rana, we have to bring this to the mayor. So what I'd like to do, based upon this conversation, is forward this to the mayor and try to formulate a process. But one of the things I, I'd like you to do, Ms. Rana, because I know that you're so heavily involved with this, is
Did we lose the chairman?
It appears he did lose connection. I'm sure he'll be back on.
Hello, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Sorry about that, guys.
We can't hear you, Mister Chairman.
How about now? Thank you, Counselor Morabito. So personally, I think we should send this off to the mayor's office. Madam Clerk, if we can send a letter, I'll send off an email to you and to the mayor. Basically, requesting input from Mike Wells, Director Rana, as well as Ruben Cantor. I, I don't know his exact title. It escapes me at the moment. My fatigue, I apologize, and I'm not even changing diapers yet. So, that's that.
Excuse me, Mister Hammond?
May?
Yes. I'm sorry. I should have had my racing function. We should have Mr. Wells and all the other directors that may be involved in this to get their input actually at maybe the next subcommittee meeting or?
That's the intent.
In, in person, and see how they feel about it, you know, pros and cons, so forth and so on. So if that's at all possible, I'd like from the people that are going to police it and try to police it. So if that's at all doable.
Vice President Visconti, that's vitally important, and more importantly, their input is, is going to be important to its success. Also, I, I think, and perhaps Director Rana may be able to expand upon this, it would also help with the process of basically a, a community kitchen, so to speak, where you can basically intertwine both of these processes. And also, remember, folks, we're getting money from the federal government for the processes of, you know, related to COVID and recovery and things of that nature. Economic development and training is one of those, one of those vehicles. So if we can hook and leverage, you know, as Mayor Orego had said the other day, you know, take monies out of these buckets of funds, then utilize it for the development within our community, in particular, you know, the parts of the community that are going to highly benefit from it. This is something that we, we should venture into, and more importantly, remember that, and if I'm not mistaken, it's thirteen dollars an hour that through the CARES Recovery Act, the city can bill for, for each department head. At least, that's my understanding. And my thought is, is these people work so hard for us, that's a simple reward. And I'll talk further about that regarding another issue with this committee. But a- as much money as we can drive from the Federal CARES Act to help the people of our community in the sense of economics, as well as feeding each other, that's a huge thing. So, Madam Clerk, I'm going to leave this in committee. I'm going to send a letter to Mike, Director Wells, and the mayor. I believe Ralph DeChico has his hand up, so I'd like to recognize him, and Ralph's a dear friend, and I apologize for not recognizing you earlier. Ralph?
Thank you, Ralph DeChico, Revere Commission of Disabilities. Thank you, Mister, Mister Chairman. I just wanted to say that I'm in favor for this feasibility study for not only residential kitchens and commercial kitchens for a couple of aspects. Number one, it's going to open up another avenue for entrepreneurship in the City of Revere. But it also could also be a catalyst for residents with disabilities, for entrepreneurship, to be able to establish their own home business for, for some of these products. And also, as you stated, and Counselor Morabito stated, these are, these are items that do not have to be refrigerated or temperature-controlled. So they're, they're, not only could they be selling in the farmer's market, but a lot of their products could be sold at our local restaurants for them to use and promote. Wouldn't it be great if there's a Revere spaghetti sauce, a Revere gravy that could be used and sold with our name on it? Not that I would use it, because, you know. Forget it, my grandmother.
Point of information.
Ralph, you're stealing my ideas already.
Information. Correct me if I, I'm pretty, I'm sure my research stated with a cottage, with the cottage food law, you cannot sell directly to a restaurant.
Uh, but you can sell it on, you can sell it through the internet, so there's, there's a way that.
But you can't sell, I just wanted to correct Mister DeChico, because you cannot sell directly to a restaurant. I just wanted to correct you.
Exactly.
I didn't want to put that thought in the viewer's mind.
The, the, also, the other thing with the commercial kitchens, the City of Revere has benefited greatly through this pandemic through commercial kitchens. We had received grants, and we were dealing with sending over five hundred mails a week because of a grant with commercial kitchens for, for some food items that we did through this whole pandemic. So it's, it's a benefit, and it's a win-win, not only for the residents, but for the community in itself. So I'm greatly in favor of this.
And just to kind of clarify a little bit of an issue, there, there is actually several factors that we can talk about. Residential slash cottage kitchen permit application in Burlington. They do allow you to sell it online, farmers market, craft fair, supermarkets, retail stores, and specialty stores. And it says a wholesale residential kitchen license is also required. You have to do it through the Department of Public Health. That might be something that we could look into after this process. Because I, I can tell you right now, the best tortillas I ever got were on Shirley Avenue on the Connor Thornton Street. And the woman that would sell them there, she's not there any longer. You know, for a stack of them, I'd pay ten bucks, and they were the best that you could get to make a tackle. I mean, honestly. So, that said, and I hate to digress, but I, I'd like to leave this in committee and forward my concerns and that of the participants tonight. The councilors, as well as Director Rana and Director DeChico to the mayor. And I, I'd like to involve, obviously, Mike Wells, as well as Ruben Cantor. Ms. Rana, if you have any other input that I could, anything else that you can think of, I greatly appreciate it. Because you've been pivotal on the issue of food economy in the City of Revere, bar none.
Thank you, Counselor Rotundo. No, just, you know, I wanted to share just a couple of examples of where we've had to create the, the process and the regulations for other food items. So for example, even for the farmer's market, our vendor applications are, have to, if they're a farm, or if they're selling other types of food, they do have to go through the health department, through Mike Wells, and follow a list of items that they need to produce in order to vend at the farmer's market. And the same thing with the food trucks and the food carts with the ordinance that the city council passed last year. It's, you know, a similar process. They have to produce their certifications, their commissary kitchen permits, things like that. And so, even with our food trucks, you know, they're by, that was a big push with the city, was that there are several Revere residents who are food truck operators who live in the city, but weren't allowed to have their food trucks operate in the city unless it was a special event. And so now the food truck ordinance allows for these Revere residents to operate their Revere businesses in the city and continue to help our economy grow here. And so, it would, you know, the commissary kitchen part, food trucks need a commissary kitchen, or what we would call in this conversation right now, a commercial kitchen, to prep their food, then, you know, put it on the food truck, then to be able to sell it during their rotations. One of the great things also about Commonwealth Kitchen and their large facility is that they have, I think, up to ten bays for food trucks where they can park, they can prep their food, they can store their food, and then also clean their food trucks, dispose of any trash, and really, you know, have a space not just for the people who are looking to make food, you know, who are not able to do from home, but also for other types of businesses like food trucks and wholesalers and et cetera, so.
And they also allow for parking there per month. So I mean, that's something that, you know, i- is very important within this ordinance, of this process. But that said, Ralph, I, I remember your grandmother's gravy. If it's anything like that, then so be it. And I can tell you, you know, the City of Revere is blessed with culinary expertise, whether it be tamales from Colombia, empanadas, chicharrón, couscous, you name it, we've got it. You go down Shirley Avenue, if you can't afford to get on a plane and travel all over the world, you don't need a passport, you just got to walk down Shirley Avenue. So that said, folks, I appreciate your input. I'm going to forward communication to the mayor. I, I hope if you all have anything, please send it to me. Counselor Morabito, please.
Mister Chairman, through you to the city clerk, should we put forth a motion in this subcommittee to go before the city council to pass that ordinance? Because it would be rather pointless to have everyone do, have a conversation and go back and forth with all these conversations if it's not the will of the city council to pass the general law.
It's already state law.
Correct, but we still have to adopt a portion of the law in order to move, get the ball rolling at all. Same thing when I passed the veterans' tax exemption, in order for us to even.
Accepted, I get it.
Yeah, we would have to adopt the law.
Yeah. I, I have no problem with that, Counselor Morabito, none whatsoever. I, so are you? Okay.
If we can put it in a form of a motion?
We would have to just read the text of the law to see if you need to accept it. From what I have seen in the Code of Regulations, it does not say that, but I would have to seek advice from a city solicitor.
Why don't we do that first? Yes. And lay this on the table for now. And we'll come back to it at the next meeting. I'll set up a, a time with you, Madam Clerk, regarding this particular issue. Counselor Morabito, are you okay with that? Counsel, Council President Zambudo? No, you cannot talk. Please do.
I can, I can. So listen, I'm in agreement that this should, we should wait for an opinion on this. I'm not a hundred, hundred percent comfortable in going forward with this yet. But I would probably, probably be more comfortable once I see a ruling on it. Thanks.
I respect that, and a- at, at the end of the day, I know that collectively, all of us can get this accomplished. And more importantly, we can get it accomplished for the people of our community that need this the most. And with that said, Madam Clerk, I'd like to thank everybody, and I'd like to move on to the first item on the agenda, if you could read it. But before I do that, is there anybody that has anything else that they would like to partake on or have any comments? Please raise your hand and let me know.
I, I just have one question, Chairman. If any, if Michael Wells or Dimple knows of any city or town that has already adopted an actual ordinance, codified ordinance into their ordinances, that would be, that would be very helpful. Take a look at.
I believe it's Boston that has. They had, under Counsel Lodge Mahia. If I'm not mistaken, is that correct, Director Rana?
Yes, that was just, I think, in the past two weeks or so. I can send that to you as well, Ashley, and a couple of others.
Thank you.
Okay, I think that's, it's for that part of the agenda. Madam Clerk, if we can revert back to one.
Sure, the first item on this evening's agenda was motion presented by Counselor Rotundo, that the mayor and city council go on record as supporting Senate bill filed by Senator Bunkory in act relative to medication assisted recovery and care. It should be noted that Counselor Serino is recused from discussion on this matter.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I believe Julie Newhall from the Sudi office is, Director is here, as well as Nicole Silvestri. I just wanted to welcome them. My, and?
I think we lost Counselor Rotundo. This happened before. He should sign on in a couple, in another minute. He keeps getting booted. I don't know if it's the service on his phone. No worries.
Mister President, you can always take over the meeting.
Thank you, Stephen, but I'll, I'll wait for the chairman to come back.
I'm sorry about that, Mark. The, sorry about that, people, my phone died. And I apologize. And I'm glad that you're here, Director Silvestri. And Madam Clerk, if you could read that, it's, I believe it's seventeen oh nine.
Yep.
And I just noticed that Counselor Zambudo tried to call me, is that correct?
Yeah, we were looking for you, George, everyone was. But again, we're on motion twenty dash zero four two, motion presented by Councilor Rotundo that the mayor and city council go on record as supporting Senate bill filed by Senator Boncorie in act relative to medication assisted care and recovery.
Correct. And this issue is near and dear to my heart. It helps people who are in recovery. And to be quite honest with you, the reason why I am requesting this particular support is because of Director Silvestri. And Director Silvestri has been involved with the aid and recovery of people within our community, as well as helping the homeless. He's been truly selfless when it comes to that, whether it be early in the morning to late at night. I can tell you, this bronze medal recipient is, probably has more valor here than on the field of combat, considering for all he has done for those that are in need, in particular, the underserved and our homeless. So, if you could, Director Silvestri, I'd greatly appreciate a little bit of background on this and why we need to go to a ninety day process and so forth.
Thank you, Counselor. And counselors, I greatly appreciate you bringing this forward this evening. I'd first like to thank Senator Boncorie for filing this, this much needed bill. Representative and Counselor Janino for being a co-sponsor of the bill. And the city council for taking this motion and showing support for it. It's, it's something that we're not looking to reinvent the wheel here. It's not like we're trying to bring in stuff that don't exist. We are only asking the state of Massachusetts, which on most issues surrounding health and human services and many other aspects, are very progressive in our ways and in our laws.
Recovery.
Yes, and it's here on this specific item, we are not leading the way in any ways. And alls we are actually doing is, is asking that the state recognize the barriers in place for people in recovery that are using multiple pathways, such as medically assisted treatments, and realize that our federal guidelines, that are usually more stringent and, and more punitive in these areas, are actually less punitive, less restrictive than our own state. And that's something that, that we need to recognize. It's testing, it's testing for the medical use of marijuana during your recovery treatment. It's the amount of tests given a year. It's the amount of take homes that, that this bill will actually help us reform. And I will, you know, I'll give a quick backstory. There was a veteran who needed some help. He moved back from Virginia. And he, at the time, he had a whole month worth of take homes. It's twenty-eight by the federal law. Had several years, was doing great. Came here to Massachusetts and they send him back to day one, where that means he lost all his prescription medicine. He had to start going into the clinic every day. Started to conflict with the new job he accepted and, again, put barriers. And we can't blame it all on the system, but due to the fact that that vet had to go back to the clinic on a daily basis, put him in, in
Lost his job.
And not lost his job, though, Counselor, but put him around addicts in early recovery that are struggling more than those who have been, have some time in. Usually those are the, the people in recovery that have the most slip ups and, and issues at first. And needless to say, this person ended up taking, made a bad decision and ended up relapsing and, and setting him back to zero. And I actually started to look into this and also went to our Sudi office and Director Newhall and Nicole, and they did some great work on, on looking at the laws, breaking them down, seeing how we could get it changed. And I can let either of them speak on to exactly what they did to, to make this happen.
Thank you, Director Silvestri. If Ms. Silvestri or Director Newhall would like to speak on this, I greatly appreciate it. I do understand that there's a ninety day component within the, the current law. If you could expand upon that and how it focuses on helping people. And, you know, the one thing that I want to say is, in the city of Riviera and surrounding communities, there's not one person that I know that has not been touched by addiction. And what we have to do as a community, as a nation, is erase the stigma of addiction and realize that substance abuse disorder is just like diabetes or any other disorder. And once treated, and once applied effectively, people can live a normal flourishing life.
Thank you, Counselor Rotundo. And before, this is really Nicole's baby. She did a lot of the research in the background, research for it all. So, I'm gonna let her speak to the specifics. But I just want to quickly add that, you know, throughout COVID, we, we came against a number of challenges with the existing methadone clinics as far as people who were even under mandated quarantine that were required to go to the clinics every day. Because the way that the law works, the medical directors of these, of these agencies have the discretion to really decide how they want to enforce the, the protocols. And it's, it's very subjective and it creates a lot of disparities for those who are really just trying to seek support. So, Nicole, if you want to explain the specifics, I think that would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Senators, thank you, yeah, Senators. Counselors, thank you very much. And Counselor Rotundo, thank you for putting this resolution for support forward tonight. So, real quickly, like Mark has said, that Bill seventeen oh nine will essentially make Massachusetts adopt the federal standards and guidelines for treatment programs that dispense methadone. It's a significant first step to addressing the barriers, to accessing life-saving in long-term recovery. So, basically, I'm gonna read it because there's so much information. So, it's just better for me to go with the pieces that I contend. So, our strict regulations far exceed the federal guidelines, namely, the number of take homes allowed, the length of time required to be eligible for take homes, THC testing, and the number of mandated drug tests per year. And Counselor, when you had said the ninety days, Massachusetts does not give any take homes for zero to ninety days, whereas the federal government will give you up to one take home in that ninety day period. And there's a few other discrepancies in terms of specifics in the timeline and length.
And this, and I don't mean to interrupt you, in this particular legislation allows for one year, one week, two year, two week, you know, they have some type of an increment that goes in. If you could expand upon that as well.
Yes, sure, absolutely. So, as I said, zero to ninety days in Massachusetts, you cannot get any take homes. At eighteen months in Massachusetts, you're allowed thirteen take homes, but you max out at thirteen. However, you're allowed, I want to say, eight take homes after year one to hypothetically, I have the whole chart and I apologize, I don't know the figures. But really, the approximate is the zero to ninety days in the over two years, allowing somebody to have twenty-eight day take homes as opposed to the maximum of about thirteen days. It's a substantial, it's a really big difference. You know, it's a matter of two weeks. Okay, so also, as I said, a number of things that we can change on. So, the regulations often argue that methadone policies are deliberately restrictive due to the risk of overdose and medication diversion. COVID nineteen has forced us to reevaluate these policies. Multiple government agencies, including the Department of Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services, the DEA, Medicare, and Medicaid announced policy changes that allowed more flexibility for prescribing and dispensing methadone to prevent widespread transmission of COVID nineteen. For example, these guidelines allowed state agencies to request exceptions for administering between fourteen and twenty-eight day take homes of methadone. Early data indicates that very few cases of diversion of take home doses have been reported. Amid the crisis, a record number of people died from a drug-related overdose, upwards of close to ninety thousand people. Now more than ever, we need to transition to a flexible, inhumane system of care by adopting a public health approach grounded in research and data, by creating evidence-based compassionate policies and programs aimed at improving people's health, wellness, and quality of life.
I totally agree with you because the more people we get into treatment, the less people we have to bury. And this does that. And I would hope that my colleagues in this committee could support this. I can't count how many times I've given out knock-in to people that were looking to get in a program, just didn't get there that day. I can't count how many people, Mark, you've gone into a program and are now doing well. So, whatever we can do as a community, whatever we can do as a state to follow the federal guidelines, CHASMA, I mean, th- this is, you know, a no-brainer as far as I'm concerned. And I am just thankful that you, both of you, worked so hard in getting this to Senator Boncorie, because I don't think it would have gotten, as far as it's gone, without you two.
Thank you, Counselor. And I also want to point out that, you know, we talk a lot about stigma associated with SUD. The stigma associated with medication for opioid use disorder, specifically methadone, is extremely stigmatized, not only among society, but the recovery community and some other, you know, pathways to recovery, stigmatize other people for their pathway. And I think that it's really important that we understand that this isn't just considered the gold standard by, you know, data, evidence. It's going back to the nineteen sixties at this point. But the reason that we are where we are is, you know, drug laws that were, you know, really routed in racism and discrimination. And here we are today, you know, fifty years after the launch of the war on drugs, and it's been nothing but a complete and utter failure.
Correct. Director Silvestri, did you have your hand up?
Counselor, I just, again, wanted to reiterate on what both Nicole and Julia have said. I really, really am honored and grateful that you brought this to the council. And I know that some on the council may not fully understand exactly what it is, but I hope that they do take their time and due diligence in reading it and understanding that we're not looking to change anything or make some crazy changes in laws. We're just trying to help take away barriers to save some lives. And Nicole hit every point on the head. For a long time, abstinence was the gold standard in people's minds.
Just say no.
Yes, and, and, and that has failed us major in, in this war. And actually, many will say Iraq and Afghanistan are, but the war on drugs is actually the longest war we've ever faced and ever have been failing on it since its launch. And it, it, this is something that the state will have to vote in. And our legislators in the House and the Senate will have to take on. But councils such as yourself, the city of Boston, also adopted this in, in support. It goes a long way to show that, that we're gaining support and not just from the recovery community, but from, from legislators, municipality leaders, and more. And I'd like to just say again, thank you very much for taking the time tonight to, to address this and to have us, you know, explain a little bit more in depth. And if anyone has any questions in regards or is struggling in need of help, please don't hesitate to, to reach out to either office. And thank you.
And just to add to that, what Mark said, thank you all for taking the time to hear, hear this out. And more so, you know, not only is this gonna save lives, it is cost-effective. We know that this works. This is a data-driven drug policy. And we've wasted billions of dollars on failed drug policies. And so, if our goal is to not only save lives, but for it to be cost-effective, then we have to utilize the data that's available and vote with our logic rather than this being a moral failing. Thank you all.
Thank you. Director Newhall, I'd just like to kind of elaborate on the issue that you brought forward. Being a nurse, having worked in an ICU, having worked in the various EAs throughout the city, more importantly, having worked for Cattaldo, I can tell you firsthand it is far cheaper to treat somebody with methadone and have them become a productive member of society in buprenorphine than it is to treat them for abscesses, overdoses, hot failure, and basically, all the various disease processes that go with an active user. And I can tell you, one case where I remember clearly, this one person spent almost a month in the ICU, and sadly, this person passed. But if that person had the opportunity to treatment and possibly methadone, maybe their outcome would have been different, I don't know. But I know anything that we can do in order to help people and put dollars where they're needed, I'm for it. And I want to thank you, your office, Ms. Silvestri, Director Silvestri, and pretty much all the work that you do over at Sudi. It goes not unnoticed. The people of Riviera should know that you provide a great service to the homeless, the addicted, and the marginalized and forgotten. And I want to let you know that this council knows this more than anyone else.
Thank you, Counselor Rotundo.
So, Madam Clerk, on the motion, I would like to put this up for a vote, unless any counselors have any questions. And if anybody has a question, please raise your hand and let's see if we can answer them.
Counselor Zambudo has his hand raised?
In order to get a unanimous vote of the council, which is what we'd want to do, obviously, I think we need we need to educate everybody better.
And we I'm sorry for interrupting Counselor Zambudo, but we would be happy to come to a city council meeting and explain the bill more thoroughly and answer any questions that the other counselors may have.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, it sounds terrific. It has merit. I know what the premise is and and I'm someone who knows recovery very well.
You should.
If I'm if I've got questions about it, I think people that don't know anything about substance abuse and recovery are probably going to have a lot more questions than me. So
Can I can I help probably simplify it in a very simple term? Whether you know about the process or not, at the end of the day, what we're doing is making it a less restrictive process at the state level versus what it is at the federal level. And the states surrounding us have a similar standard. And and at the end of the day, this is all guided by healthcare professionals. It's more importantly provided by the Department of Public Health. And all it is is a regulation change in order to permit treatment so that people can be treated at home at longer lengths at various parts of their recovery.
Yeah, I understand. I understand that part of it, Counselor.
Counselor Zambudo, the federal guidelines are less restrictive than Massachusetts. So there's like four key points in particular. Massachusetts, which we not only have medical marijuana, but we also have recreational, penalizes people who test THC in their urinalysis. Where the federal guidelines, other than at admission, they do not test for THC. So people who are, you know, deemed disabled by, you know, their medical marijuana card that have their qualifying condition are not able to get they're automatically disqualified to get any take home doses. So that's one component of it. The second major one is that at two years in, you know, in compliance, the federal government gives you 30 days, whereas the state only gives you 13 day max. Another component.
This is on the take home methadone? Is that what this is?
Yes, so basically, we just want to adopt the federal guidelines because obviously we cannot change those yet. We will, but not yet. It's just the state to align with the feds, basically.
I get it. Okay. I'm good. Thank you.
Chairman, did you want a roll call or did was this staying in committee?
No, I'd like a roll call.
Sure. Okay, so again, this is on the motion that the mayor and city council go on record as supporting Senate bill filed by Senator Boncory in act relative to medication assisted recovery and care.
Madam President, before we start, would you mind if I amend that to add requesting Representative Jeff Turco to sign on as a co-sponsor? I know I'm torturing you and I apologize.
No, no, you're not.
Maybe we can get Ralph DeChico to get you some of that gravy that he makes. Trust me, it's good.
All right, so as so this is on the motion as amended. Counselor Keith is absent. Counselor McKenna is absent. Counselor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Serino is recused. Counselor Visconti.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Chairman Rotundo.
Absolutely, yes.
Yes, this motion will be forwarded to the full city council as amended with a favorable recommendation. There's no further business.
Madam President, if I may stay up if I may stay on the line just to let everybody know as wish as I have the opportunity to use the bully pulpit, two things. First and foremost, that those people that have lost members to COVID, family members, the city will be putting, I believe, a link on the city website for FEMA in order to get funds in order to help you pay the cost or help you return the cost that you may have paid for those that have passed for burial, et cetera. And I thank you all, and that's as much as I have at this point. Thank you so much, Madam President. I mean, you should be the president.
No, no, just clerk from now and forever. See you guys. Have a good one.
Thank you all. Bye bye.[1663.63]